Welcome to tonight's Candidates Forum featuring individuals running to serve on the Marion City Council. This is the second of three forums tonight. After the completion of this forum, which is set to last for one hour, we'll conclude our evening with candidates running for the Lynn Mar School Board. My name is Bob Hoyt and I have the honor of serving as tonight's moderator. The Marion City Council is made up of seven members. Three of the members, including the mayor, are known as council members at large. They're elected by all Marion voters. The other four council members are nominated and elected by only the voters in their respective wards. City council members are elected to serve four-year terms. This year, there are two at-large seats open for election and two ward positions, including Ward Two and Ward Four. Ward Two primarily encompasses the north-central section of Marion. Ward Four is primarily the northwest portion of the community. Voters can identify the ward they live in by visiting www.cityofmarion.org. This year, three of the four seats are uncontested races. Grant Harper is a current city council member seeking an at-large seat that was vacated last year with the passing of longtime community leader Paul Draper. Grant was appointed to the seat in May of last year. Steve Jensen is a current council member. He's the only candidate appearing on the ballot for the Ward Two seat. Sarah Mensah is running for the Ward Four council seat. This seat is being vacated by Renee Gudellia, who served on the city council for the past four years. The only contested race on the ballot is between the incumbent Randy Sternad and newcomer Dale Monroe. They're running for another at-large seat on the council. Our city council is a community team that determines all municipal policies, sets the strategic plan, approves the city budget, adopts ordinances, and appoints a city manager who is the chief administrative officer for the city. Tonight, candidates will be asked questions from a predetermined list that has not been shared with the candidates ahead of time. Members of the audience may also submit questions by writing them on the note cards available in the room. If you do not have a card and would like to submit a question for consideration, please raise your hand and we will get one to you. We will sort through questions as they're submitted and perhaps combine some of them together with similar questions. We'll not accept questions attempted to be presented verbally from members of the audience or the media in attendance. Please use the provided cards and your cooperation is appreciated. Tonight, we'll start first with candidates in the uncontested race. We're going to ask each of them only one question and then dismiss them so they can focus on the contested race for the evening. So that you can, not they can. Please introduce yourself to the audience. Share briefly, this is for the three uncontested candidates, please share briefly about your background and tell us why you think Marion is the best place in Iowa to raise a family and grow a business. You'll have 60 seconds. Grant Harper.
Thank you. So, yes, my name is-
Excuse me, Grant. We'll have two minutes. Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. I was worried because usually name and address takes me 15, but I'll tone it down. Again, my name is Grant Harper and I'm running uncontested to continue filling the vacancy that was created with the passing of Mr. Paul Draper in early of 2020. I was appointed, as Mr. Hoyt said, to council in May of that year, and over the last 17 months, it's been a pretty steep learning curve at various times. But what I have learned is, is that the role of the city council member, while it is legislative, we have a responsibility to make sure that we understand the full breadth and depth of the issues that are coming to council and also to be responsive to those matters that come to city council members. And I am absolutely confident that there are a few members of the community that have me on speed dial right now. And that's okay. That's part of the duty. I think the second part of the question was, why is Marion a good place to raise a family? My wife and I have lived here for 42 years. Our kids grew up in Marion. We've seen Marion grow. We've seen Marion improve and we've seen Marion, in recent years, posture itself for further development, growth, and to bring amenities not only to the families that are moving here, but also to keep an eye on business development and growth on the business and commercial side of things. And that is what is absolutely fascinating and important, in my view, to continue that trend. Thank you.
Steve Jensen.
Thank you. I have lived in Marion since 1962. I'm a 1972 Marion High School graduate. My background is as a CPA, an executive officer at Freund Vector Corporation in Marion, and as a commercial loan officer. So, all of that background and experience, I think, is what has helped me on the city council to better serve the community, which is exactly the main reason why I ran for city council four years ago. I have been in volunteer positions and on boards for 35 years prior to that. I look at being on city council as an extension of what I've done in the past, and that is serving the community and the citizens and trying to make Marion a better place to live. I think that has been done. One of the other reasons I ran four years ago is to continue the momentum because I certainly believed at that time, the city council at that time had been doing a very good job, and I believe where the city council and the city are today, we are in an excellent position. We have a lot of projects going on, a lot of initiatives, and just by the fact that I've been here since 1962, all my kids are in the area. I think that is reason enough on why I believe Marion is one of the best places to live and to work and to grow business. Thank you.
Sarah Mensah.
Hello. I'm Sarah Mensah, running for Ward Four. I'm a 26, 27-year resident of Marion, so not my entire life, but it is the place we've lived the longest, and if you back that up, you'll probably figure out my age. We raised all three of our children here, and I've worked in a nonprofit since we moved to the community in 1994. I've worked on community development initiatives with the Chamber of Commerce in Cedar Rapids and Government Affairs, worked on Blue Zones Project, Sunrise Yoga, for those of you who have come out on our Saturday mornings in our gardens. And I really believe in Marion, and I really believe it is a special place because the people and the teams that have been willing to step up, the people that have driven initiatives in this community, the momentum is unmatched, and we are in envy of a lot of communities when they look at us, and I'm proud to be a part of it as a volunteer. And I really looked at this as a next step in how I can help this community and be a part of that team. You know, I guess most of my background has been coalition building and bringing the right people to the table to move things forward. And we have a wealth of knowledge. We have a wealth of great people here to do that, and we have to keep things moving in a positive direction. We have a lot of people moving to the community. We need to engage with them, let them be a part of all of the great things happening here, and make them feel like they belong here and that they want to be a lifelong resident. So, I look forward to serving that. I think it's why Marion is a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and I look forward to serving in the community.
Thank you. The three uncontested candidates may have a seat, please. We'll now present questions to Mr. Sternad and Mr. Monroe on a rotating basis throughout the remainder of our time. For the first question, you'll have two minutes. For the remaining questions, you'll have one minute. So, please pay attention to the time cards at the front of the room to help us move through as many questions as we can this evening. Question number one, and we'll begin with Mr. Sternad. Let's begin by asking each of you to introduce yourself and share a little background as to why you believe you're the best candidate to serve on the city council. Randy Sternad.
Thank you. My name is Randy Sternad. I've been a resident here of Marion since 2000. I was born and raised in the Cedar Rapids side and had family that lived in Marion, so really Marion has been home for me for many years. A little bit of a background on my behalf, after I was born, my family traveled. My dad was in nuclear construction. By the time I had graduated high school at the age of 18, I had lived in 21 different cities. So, I have seen a fair amount of changes and differences in small communities, large communities. When I decided to come back to the particular area here to call this home after high school, this gave me the opportunity to embed myself in our community. So, I had a tagline I used to use for years, and that was "Working for you and living beside you." I won't go through all of the things that I'm affiliated with, but I did serve on the Marion Fire Department from 2010 to 2018. We have a combination fire department here that is volunteer. We actually call that a combination department. I also served on the ambassadors for the Marion Chamber of Commerce. That goes back a number of years. That's back when we were the green coats. And so, I chaired that for a year or two and participated with that as well, too. On the city council, I'm engaged in many different things. I have them all written down here. Maybe it'll come out a little bit later today, but my wife and I, who is in the audience here, Margaret, we have a very successful insurance agency. We have a contract with Farm Bureau Financial Services, and you know, as we've gone through the derecho, we couldn't be more embedded in our community as far as getting right into the thick and thin of taking care of our community, starting with the residents, the commercial businesses. I've been very excited about being on the council. I have served. I was appointed to council by application in 2016, ran on the election in '17, was re-elected and completing my first term, and I'm looking forward to serving another term for the residents of our community. Thank you.
Dale Monroe.
My wife and I have lived in the town for 42 years. We have raised three sons, and one of them's married, and they've all enjoyed the benefits of growing in a community that pays attention to its people. I think the thing that attracted us most was the safe environment that our kids were able to grow up in. It's one that we don't take for granted. The responsibility is with our fire and with our police and with our leadership to make sure that the place is what people want. The second thing that I thought was most important was that as people reached out or as government officials reached out, they reached out to the whole community, and they wanted to hear from everybody and they wanted to make sure they met our needs. So, prior to that, or prior to now, I've spent most of my time in volunteer positions, even as an administrator, as a businessperson, as a business owner. I've spent time in business development in a variety of organizations. But now, I've gone from the volunteer side of volunteering for the chamber and being chair of that. I was chamber, Medco chair and participated in the Imagine Eight focus groups, fundraising for the library, Milestones. Marion was a project that I co-chaired with their official. I've also participated with a variety of service groups. But right now, I've decided that my passion for the city and what they've given my family and myself requires me to step to the table and provide some of my leadership skills, which I'm sure we'll get to talk about later on. So, I'm pleased to be a candidate, and I'm hoping that you'll see the benefits of voting for me later on this next week. Thank you.
Okay. For the remainder of the questions, you'll have 60 seconds to answer. And Dale Monroe, we'll begin with you. In Iowa, local governments rely primarily on property taxes to fund community services and capital improvement projects. According to the Nonpartisan Tax Foundation, Iowa currently ranks 17th in the country for property taxes per capita. As a council member, how do you balance community needs with the capacity of a property owner to pay?
There's a couple of different things. First of all, we benefited from a government that's paid close attention to the balance between residents as well as businesses. And where 85% of our tax money comes from property taxes on homes, it's a high priority for all of us. How I would be able to pay attention to this is that as you look at projects, you try to balance what people are asking for and really wanting in their community with what we can afford to have. The community's been lucky in that we've been able to have the last three years, two years, without any increase at all in our taxes, and we've added plenty of amenities. So, you balance the deal between what parents or, excuse me, what people want in the community with what you can afford, and you do it one step at a time, and that involves planning, and that's what I would use.
Randy Sternad.
Thank you. This is a critical deal. We've been talking about this for a number of years, where we have to be very careful about the growth of our city and where the actual tax base comes from. We currently, as residents right now, spend anywhere approximately $14.19 per thousand for property taxes. We've done a very good job, previous councils have done a really good job of obviously trying to suppress that and keep that down with the additional services that we're providing. So, as we talk about our growth now being over the 40,000 range of population, we have to be concerned with, you know, things about the additional roads that come in, where do those taxes come from. Also, too, part of the things that we need to really do is leverage ourselves against Des Moines in our capital and be working against the property tax, the backfills. There's some legislation changes that could be coming in the near future that could impose some of that stuff, or excuse me, impede. So, we have to be very careful about what we're doing and balancing that. We'll be going into conversations to start the budget for the next fiscal year coming up here in the next couple of years. So, this is a critical one and needs to be kept at the forefront foreground. Thank you.
Randy, the next question is for you first. Where are your favorite places to spend time in our town?
I don't know whether to ask that or give this one over to my wife. We love to spend time in our local establishments throughout our community. We try to strive to spend our dollars primarily here in our local community. We like to take advantage of the trails. I am a new owner of a bicycle, so my wife has gotten me on a bike this year. So, we are taking advantage, and that's another thing that I'm very involved with, and that's in the Metropolitan Planning Organization to help build the trails throughout our network of trails with the cities that combine all of our communities. So, we like to spend our time on the trails, the parks, local businesses, establishments. We like to partake in our local church and some of the other activities that they put on as well, too. So, Marion really has it all going on. We take a look at all the events that are going on that are hosted for free in our community throughout our park system, and I encourage people to take advantage of those. Those are great opportunities.
Dale Monroe.
Okay. This is going to sound a little redundant, but we do likewise. We try to participate in as many town activities and events as we can. We've spent time out here at Lau Park. We've spent time at Thomas Park when the kids were younger and Lau Park wasn't here. We've spent time on the golf courses. We've spent time at the various restaurants, eating. You can look at me a little bit and see I like to eat, and so, that's a favorite thing that I do. Pre-COVID, we spent a lot more time eating out than we did now, but we also participate in sundae ice cream cones. We participate at the various spots around town. And then, we've gone to the theater, Lyer's Theater, the Garden Theater when I was there. We try to participate in as many events as we can. The Marion Pub Crawl, chamber events. We've been to the park activities up in Central Park when they go on on Thursday nights and Friday nights. So, we try to participate as much as we can in the events that are available to us.
Dale, we'll begin with you for the next question also. The 2020 census placed Marion as the 13th largest city in Iowa with a population of 41,137. As a community continues to grow, where does the council need to be most thoughtful in balancing small-town charm with the stereotypes of big-city government?
I think Marion probably already does a lot of that, and it's voiced a little bit in what Sarah said. It's in the people that are here. People here are very welcoming to start with. I think we need to keep that welcoming feeling that we give to people when they do come to our community. We also need to be able to balance that with that. I'm going to go back to the houses, 85% of residents carrying the load for the community. We need to pay attention to that and make sure that we grow businesses that'll participate in supplying that tax base for us as well. The biggest thing, again, is our culture of welcoming that I think will keep people seeing us as that small town. The events that we sponsor, the various avenues that they have to spend time out with their families, those are all things that'll keep us in that small-town favor while we continue to grow.
Randy Sternad, same question.
Thank you. As we take a look, as I'm mentally thinking of our downtown corridor, we've already set the pace as to where we're actually headed with that. We want to preserve the charm of our community. We had emails that just came in recently, and we've had some discussions about what that uptown will look like now because of the derecho and some of the damages that took place. There's a few things that I also want to put a little bit of focus on, too, and that's the corridor that's going to be tying in Highway 13 through our community, our bedroom community's on over to 380, and that's going to be the Tower Terrace Road. So, as we take a look at that, we must be very, very careful as to how we take a look at what that build-out looks like. We're seeing trends today where we're seeing strip malls and individual retail stores wanting to stand alone in their own footprint, so no longer of the day are we seeing the large malls. One of the other things that I want to make sure that we're paying attention to is also to the focus on what the new generations are looking like. I've got children that are in their mid-20s, and to the best of my knowledge, I don't think any of them really want to own their home. So, we've got to take a look at that. What does that look like? Do they rent places? Do they live in condominiums? Those are things that we need to be forecasting for in the future. I think that's going to be very important to the community.
Thank you. Randy Sternad, the next question, we'll begin with you. As an elected official, how will you promote diversity and inclusion to grow our community's workforce?
This is a great question because I am a big believer that we have probably crossed the timeline where throwing a help-wanted sign-up in our window in our place of business and expecting applications to walk through the door or applicants themselves are pretty much over. I came from an era in my retail business prior to being an insurance agent. I worked for 10 years in retail, and my responsibility was to basically hire the staff for new stores, train them, get them up and going, and move on to the next location and build a new store. So, I'd like to see a little bit of a shift where all business owners go out in prospect for their now-new candidates for their employees, and I think our city should be one of those as well, too. Rather than wait for that talent to walk through the door, we should be going out and looking for that talent and drawing them in, and I think that's what's going to set us ahead of our competition because we will lose, as all businesses, we're going to lose our employees to our competition if we're not paying attention to that.
Dale Monroe.
Again, I'm going to go back to the welcoming community. If we welcome people in from a variety of different segments of our life or of our world, we're going to have a workforce that's going to be diverse to start with. I think we need to utilize places like Kirkwood Community College and the workforce development and the things that they do, a little bit of what Medco's doing with our students and preparing them early on with the houses that they're rehabbing. I think there are many opportunities that schools now have for students to go out and do internships for a variety of different things they're interested in, rather than pick that position, get into it about six or seven years, and then change their mind. If we can continue to promote all of those ideas, I think we'll be able to grow our own workforce. And then, we also need to take advantage of our workforce that's moved to other places and welcome them back as well.
For the next question, Dale Monroe, we'll begin with you. What unique characteristics of our community should we capitalize on to retain and attract business?
Well, I think probably the thing that's most prevalent in my mind is we've gone from about five or six years ago when we were working on Medco, everybody was talking about shovel-ready, and everybody had to have a spot where you could put a shovel in and build a building, build your business, all of that. I think the movement now has been toward building-ready, and once we have our buildings up that they can do and we'll have some spares around, then I think we can work really hard at showing how the various policies that we have in the city promote businesses coming here, promote people starting their businesses, promote businesses that are currently here to expand, and we can grow our community through the various policies that we have in place and the partnerships with workforce development, Kirkwood Community College. Medco does a great job.
Randy Sternad.
Thank you. I want to just concur on the majority of all of that. Obviously, we have great tools in place. We have Medco. We have the Marion Chamber of Commerce. We have the internet. We have the technology to be able to take a look at providing opportunities for us. Again, not to bang on my background, but we're going to run out of land. We are running out of land now. So, it's difficult to see, you know, when we take a look at something and say, well, we're looking for an enterprise to come in. There's a lot of needs there. There's going to be services. There's going to be water that needs to be brought in, electricity services, a hiring force. What does the employment look like? Can we actually recruit people to jobs in the local community here? They're going to need homes. They want to raise their families. They want to do a lot of those things. But again, too, we're running out of a lot of those opportunities there, but I think the collaboration that we have, and it's even more important for the city officials to be working with our extensions of these particular areas, that we've got a wonderful, I would put any of our folks up against anybody in the nation. We've got an incredible opportunity here for people and opportunities for businesses, small and large, to take a look at our community.
Randy Sternad, the next question, we'll start with you. Where can the city of Marion do better or reach higher?
The tagline, right? Reach higher. We're always taking a look at things. You know, when we're taking a look at stuff that's coming to us through the planning and zoning, we take a look at, you know, we can think of the things off the top of our heads when we think of logos, right? We were just talking about the Kentucky Fried Chicken in town. Everybody knows what the Colonel Sanders looks like, and it looks like there's going to be some building changes that are going to come along as far as what their new, you know, their new colors will look like. For us, what that means is we always want to strive to do better. We are in the midst right now of actually allowing people to build, alter, and change locations and their facilities, and these will be around for the next 100 years. So, what do we want that to take a look like? We are setting the footprint today, and that was what I ran on the platform four years ago, is these are probably the most critical years of our community here as to what the next generations will be taking a look at. Those are all very critical to us. We can always do better. We will never stop at just saying, this is okay, or these are standard policies. We want to move forward and do better.
Things that I'll mention in the minute that I have, and the first one is, if you think about the corridors that we have and the transportation flows that we have, if you go to Highway 100 and you go all the way to County Home Road, I think we have a great opportunity there to think outside of the box and to provide a blueprint, a futuristic blueprint on what we want to be along Highway 13. What do we want to have in terms of restaurants? What do we want to have in terms of hotels, which is the need? What do we want to have in terms of housing? With Prospect Meadows out there, it seems to me we have a perfect opportunity to extend ourselves at least to the city limits right now. The second thing is, what are we going to do with our landfill when that closes in 2045? It seems to me, and don't take offense, I just don't want to put a bench on top of it and have it be the highest point in Marion. I'd like it to be something more productive. If I thought a little bit higher, I might think about being the region's second-largest city in the state, what would we do with the botanical garden? We could put it at Lau Park or somewhere at the spot. That would take a lot of work, but a botanical garden might be a big draw for the town of Marion and fit into our culture.
Dale Monroe, the next question, we'll begin with you. What is your position on financial incentives to businesses seeking to locate or expand in the Marion community?
Well, there are a variety of state funding sources that are helpful to us as we try to attract businesses and move them in. We have the TIF that's available to us. We also have opportunities where developers and private businesses have partnered so that they have the ability to provide land, provide some kind of building space, and get those companies growing. I think we could lean on those a little bit more, and I think we need to plan in our budget to spend a portion of our money to attract businesses, much like the Medco's doing when they're sending out flyers and trying to capture the audience of businesses that have potential to move here.
Randy Sternad.
Thank you. The TIF that we're referring to is the Taxation Committee on Financing, and that's an opportunity for people to take a look at that can leverage businesses to come in, and basically what you're talking about is building a platform there where they're going to have some tax relief. We do have to be careful with that. There's people that want to come in and lay the cards down and say, we will build this, but this is what we want in exchange with that. We have a critical time right now where we have a flow chart where we're actually tracking now, where we have given that TIF credit in the years past, and now those TIF credits are actually expiring. So, we're very excited to start to see some of these things come on what I call the bankroll now because if you understand our corridor through the Seventh Avenue, that is all on the Marion Independent School District tax base. So, I've been a big component in making sure that we try to get that built out as quickly as possible because that is a huge component, as we witnessed from the board members here previously about, you know, where does that funding come from and take a look at. So, it's a great tool, but again, we're fiduciaries and we are stewards of the taxpayer dollar, and we have to be careful with that.
Randy Sternad, we'll begin with you for the next question. On November 2nd, Lynn County voters will be asked to extend the local option sales tax for 10 years. Do you support this tax and why?
I do. Thank you for that opportunity. We had kind of gone through the numbers on this last week, and forgive me, I'm going to steal the words from a colleague of mine. It's simple math. If we don't pass-
If we don't see, if we don't pass this local option sales tax, uh, what that is going to do is, is we as residents are paying somewhere around three hundred and ten dollars per year, um, in our own taxes through our sales, and that's through the, the increment, uh, excuse me, the uh, um, local option sales tax. Um, if we, if that fails and does not come through, we could potentially see a substantial amount of increase, um, on an increase to our property taxes if we were to try to keep our levy, uh, tax level, and that's critical for us. So we need to make sure that that focuses through. Um, that is going to sunset, um, in, I believe, uh, twenty twenty-four on June thirtieth. If we extend it for another ten years, it is critical for us. Again, too, just keep in mind, uh, we collect six million dollars per year, that's five hundred thousand dollars per month, um, in uh, local option sales tax money. I did sit on that committee for an entire year and I witnessed how that actually worked. Thirty percent of our proceeds go back to capital improvement projects and seventy percent goes back into infrastructure, so I encourage everyone to vote yes.
Dale Monroe.
No, I'll, I'll go one step further. There, there's no doubt, uh, the six million dollars that the city of Marion gets every year from local option sales tax, um, is not just the tax on the current citizens. Forty percent of that tax comes from outside people who visit. Uh, I'm going to use Prospect Meadows as an example. The four hundred, um, uh, million, the four million dollars that they brought in this year, uh, people spent money at restaurants, they spent money at hotels, and forty percent of that money that they spent, the tax that they spend there, comes from outside of our jurisdiction. So we, we benefit big time. We pay sixty percent as, as Randy mentioned, but in the end, we reap the benefit of a hundred percent. You only have to go around the projects that are going on around town, Tower Terrace, downtown and around, and you see the signs that Metco's put up and the Chamber put up showing this is a project that local option sales tax is paying for. We would pay big time if we didn't pass for it, so absolutely got to pass it.
Dale, the next question, we'll begin with you. When it comes to the community's capital improvement program, what are the most critical projects that might come with the highest return on investment?
The highest return on investment right now, if you listen to the people I've talked to in the last two months, is leave some streets open. So leaving the streets open and getting those completed with the infrastructure are the two biggest things. Uh, infrastructure goes all the way back to, um, what are we going to do with detouring um, uh, sewers and, and gas pipes and water pipes? You only had to walk around that Seventh Avenue project and look at what they were digging up, uh, as they were trying to repair that, and shoot, we're lucky we didn't have some major disasters happen before this. We need to pay attention to the rest of the city with that, and we'll get a great return on our investment because people want to come here, live here, work here and play and build their, uh, homes as well as their businesses if we pay attention to roads, our, our current roads and, and future roads as well as our infrastructure.
Randy Sternad.
Thank you. I'm going to take this one a little bit twisted, but my philosophy is, is if you flush it, it goes away. So we want to make sure that the infrastructure is, is very critical. We've got some, uh, part of our development area in the uptown area, um, with all this new growth, if you can imagine if we're going to put a new apartment building up, what the actual sewer system and the trunk line system would actually need, um, to, to facilitate that. Obviously, fresh water, um, the nine-one-one services that go attached with that. As our city continues to grow to the north and grow to the east, just think about the miles that we've added to our community here. When you stop and think about that, there's snowplows that have to go down those roads, there's garbage that has to be picked up, there's services that go along with that. So a lot of those capital improvement projects are part of that, the streetscapes, um, trying to re, re, uh, validate our uptown particular area there because, um, as our city was built, um, it's kind of like rings, and so you get to fifteen to twenty years out and that next ring has a lifespan and a life cycle, and, and we are, we're finding ourselves having to go back and, and fix those particular areas. So as, as time goes on, uh, so does that, that, that cycle of life, um, through those services, those services.
Randy Sternad, the question, the next question, we'll begin with you. A common workforce trend is that employees look for attractive communities before they look for a career in that location. One project the city is considering is a new aquatics center. Current concepts suggest a price tag exceeding twenty million dollars. Do you support this investment in putting a referendum before voters to fund it?
To be very honest with that one, I am still out on that particular topic. Um, as you've talked to some of your, uh, the previous panel that was up here, it's critical to visit with people, so as I've been knocking on doors and visiting with people, I've been asking them about that on that aquatic center. There was some big confusion as to when we had a presentation given to the city council that this had already been approved and we were moving forward with it. At this time, it's only conceptual. Our current pool is failing. Um, I have a client that lives behind there and he had water tests done in his backyard, and uh, it was not a pipe in his yard that was broke, it actually contained chlorine, it was actually water from our city pool that was flooding the neighborhood yards in that particular area there. So this pool has gone beyond its life cycle, it's done a nice job, but if we want to, again, if we want to retain our community and not outsource that to other communities, we do have to take a look at something. Now, is it that grand of scale? Those are the things that I'd like to take back to the general public, our constituents, and ask them, is that something that they will support? And I think it's, it's time for some dialogue with that. Um, so at this particular time, I'm, I'm neither or, I'm still out and I want to visit with more people about it.
Dale Monroe.
I had the opportunity to go through the presentations that, um, city council, city and council members have, but I have paid attention to the minutes, I paid attention through, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we, uh, know that they have done a study, and I want to understore the word study, on what could be an aquatic center someplace in, in Marion. I support the idea of aquatic center because I think it's one of those things that, um, you only had to go through last summer where you couldn't go to the pool and kids definitely missed it. I think we need to have that as well as, again, Prospect Meadows brings a lot of young kids in, and they'll come to a place like that if we have it. Uh, it's another source of revenue for the community. Uh, the second part of your question was, would I support taking it to a bond issue to support it? Um, I think that's a little premature. I think we need to take a look at what avenues or what funding sources we have available, and if we need to bring it to the community, we certainly will because we listen to them. It's one of the Imagine Eight projects was to design a new pool, and so they're following that course, and I applaud them for that.
Dale Monroe, we'll begin with you on the next question. What will Marion look like in twenty forty and what will be our largest challenges to get there?
In twenty forty, it'll be a town of sixty thousand according to the projections, and that town of sixty thousand is going to require the amenities that we currently have plus some futuristic, futuristic things. In my walkarounds with people, they want to have, again, the, the paths that we've got, the biking paths, the walking paths, they want to have, um, more adult, um, uh, sports available for people to participate in. Uh, that group that came back, that moved away from here after high school and came back, they want to still be, uh, athletes and they want to participate. We'll have to have those amenities, we'll have to continue to look at the, um, aquatic pool, it might have a botanical garden. Uh, for certain, we'll have something that'll replace the landfill and hopefully be a draw for the town of Marion. The biggest obstacle is what do we do with that infrastructure? We only have so much, uh, water and sewer that goes to a certain point. If we're going to have that kind of growth, what are we going to do to accommodate it?
Randy Sternad.
Thank you. Um, in that particular year, I've actually been able to see obviously into the future just a little bit here. So I see our growth expanding beyond Highway thirteen and extending out towards the airport, uh, moving that way, going up to County Home Road, um, backfilling in around the Prospect Meadows, coming back around, we'll see a closed landfill that will no longer be open for business. We will be doing our, our land, our, um, our trash and some other means, and we'll see our city built out going out to Highway, excuse me, out to County Home Road, and we'll see those residential areas start to have, uh, nice, uh, particular areas out there like pharmacies, walkable paths, places where they can get their groceries, things, amenities that are needed on the north side. We're going to see a completely built out Tower Terrace Road, we'll see that connected all the way over to, uh, Interstate three eighty, and we'll see a lot of that transient traffic coming through here and hopefully wanting to stop in our community. I also want to see, uh, moderate income housing, um, available, more to individuals, again, to those kids that don't want to actually own their own property, uh, but they want to have the one point four, five cars, they want to be able to walk or bicycle to work and put those amenities in place as well, too, and, and of course, I want to see a thriving uptown as well as an entire community.
Randy Sternad, the question, uh, the next question will be yours. As a council member, from whom will you speak advice or input as you weigh key issues?
From experience, I can tell you, I, I talk to everybody. I talk to constituents about topics that will be, um, greatly affecting obviously the public. It could be anything from, uh, our, our police, our fire, our services, it depends on what the topic is. If it's something that requires our public services to be involved with, I take all kinds of telephone calls, I take emails from people with concerns and their, their needs. Um, I can reach out to anybody in our, in our, in our department staff and feel confident that we're going to be able to get those things done. I reach out and do a lot of work on my own, um, through a lot of the things, I'm very involved, a lot of different organizations within our, I'm on the airport board, I'm on the, I was on the Firefighters Association, um, I see it on our finance oversight committee, all of those topics, I have people that I can go to. Um, but most importantly, I, I work with the constituents to understand what their, you know, what their understanding is out there, making sure that the community has a thorough understanding. If it's an immediate need, uh, for a service or some type of nine-one-one situation, we will deal with those directly, but, um, if it's something that's of general topic, we like to have those conversations that are wrapped around everybody.
Dale Monroe.
The best example of, um, our listening is with Imagine Eight, which was a widespread, um, accomplishment by the Chamber and by Metco to hear what the patrons had to say. I think we need to continue to update that and to bring that to the table so that we can meet the needs of our community as we go forward. Um, my personal, uh, point of view is that listening is one of the things that God made us all prepared for. He gave you two ears and he gave you one mouth, so you could listen twice as much as you speak. And I think that, um, we can do a good job of doing that by walking around, participating in, in activities in the town, and in the end, listening, I found, is one of the kindest things you can do. It's what brings our community together.
The next question, Dale, we'll begin with you. Dale Monroe, excuse me. Tell us about some of your recent community involvement.
My recent community involvement has been through, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, I've been involved heavily in that, I've been involved in, um, not as recently, but the Blue Zones, um, uh, participation that we did here in town. I've been involved in, um, several community events that I've, uh, participated and supported. Um, my involvement in my church has been, uh, fulfilling, uh, and my involvement in, uh, just being around the community and listening to people in the various settings, coffee shops, uh, restaurants, uh, those are the places where I think I find the most, uh, opportunity to listen and hear from people about what they want.
Randy Sternad.
Thank you. Um, I believe in, in giving back to the community in the, in, in the fashion that, uh, uh, I joined, I joined the fire department. Um, fighting fires, helping people get through some of those things, those are just all part of our, uh, you know, what we're near and dear to, I could tell you some stories that would, um, that are just incredible. So being on fire department for me was a critical, uh, a cr, a critical deal and, and very proud of that actual time. So to be able to serve in a different capacity was, was very, uh, fortunate for me to, to move up, um, you know, to the council level. But just as a little bit of an outline, um, I, I work greatly with the Marion Hotel Motel Tax Review Board, uh, so every year when we have those monies that come through for visitors that come into our community, we give those back out into the community and try to promote our, our city, um, throughout the, um, uh, country, actually. So there's been a lot of, uh, conventions and things that have been hosted here. Um, things like the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, I'm part of that, the Marion Airport Advisory Committee, I'm part of that. Uh, the Marion Financial Oversight Committee, I've been, uh, part of that, Marion Local Option Sales Tax Oversight Committee, I participated in that, and I'm very proud to say that I've received the designation of C E M O with the, um, as a certified elected municipal official uh, through the Iowa League of Cities, and that's an organization that is a platform that our, our city is very strong, um, in supporting, and we work with that very greatly, uh, excuse me, very dearly, and, uh, so I'm very fortunate to attend and be part of that on an annual basis as well, too. So very committed, um, in a lot of things.
Okay. Randy Sternad, the next question, we'll start with you. How would you balance new development and new construction with aging housing stock? In particular, how do we improve our neighborhoods closest to uptown?
That's a great question, and we're actually working through some of those details now, right? Some of the things like, um, our streets, you know, do they remain brick? Do we move them to asphalt? Um, do they go to concrete? I think there's got to be a period where you can kind of transition from that old world to new world. Um, I really like the concept that we're seeing some of the building plans and designs coming forward, um, where people are using the architectural design styles of, uh, making new buildings look old. Um, I'll pick, for example, on the Phillips Diamond Shop Center. Um, there's many examples, and I'm just using that one as a, as one in the uptown area. So something that was actually built rather new, but it was designed to look rather old. So we want to kind of keep that heritage going for our community because that's really, I think, the bones of where our community, um, lies, and as we see an aging population and, um, again, being in the insurance business, I've got a lot of elderly clients that, um, we find them moving south in the wintertime to winter, and as their health, uh, changes, we find them coming back to declare residency back in, uh, Marion as full-time again. So even though that they like to go to Arizona or Florida, uh, for the winter months, they find out that they come back on a full-time basis, so we want to make sure we preserve that as well.
Dale Monroe.
I would, um, focus on some of the projects that we currently have going that are driven by the comprehensive plan. Uh, most wouldn't know that the comprehensive plan for the city hadn't been done for, hadn't been reviewed in twenty years. Uh, they've done a good job of reviewing that now, and that's going to come to the city council for final approval. Why is it important? Because it takes into consideration some of the things that they just mentioned, the historical district, it takes in consideration that. It builds some, uh, clear and delineated lines around parts of the city that will, um, benefit from having certain, um, building projects. The West End is a good example. That project was brought in and, and, uh, put in place, and it kept clearly in mind the, um, traditional buildings that were on that property as well as adding buildings that would, uh, meet the needs of, uh, Marion in the future. We just need to have a strong, uh, commitment to, um, the, uh, continuing development of the city and keeping our culture alive and well.
Dale Monroe, we'll begin with you for the next question. What is your view of expanding the Marion Airport?
Okay. The Marion Airport, I've read quite a bit about, I have been involved in a couple of the meetings where people were, um, discussing that. I know that the airport has, uh, become a critical piece of our economic development for the future. As businesses have located here, they've wanted to participate by bringing more than one or two in a plane to, uh, the airport. That meant that they had to look at the, uh, alignment of it, they had to look at the size of the, um, uh, runways, they had to look at the direction in which they come in, crosswind, uh, directions as well. There's a whole list of specs, I've read the whole report that came from, um, the engineers, and it seems to me that, uh, we need to look at all the options that are available. We need to update the runways, we need to update the facilities, we need to identify solutions because this is going to have an economic impact on us, so I support us searching for those, um, those ideas.
Randy Sternad.
Thank you. Um, just to piggyback off of some of those topics, we actually have a new runway out there, it's been completely, uh, re-asphalated, um, it's a beautiful runway. Uh, the city is at a critical point here as far as taking a look at, uh, what do we see the future build out of, of the airport and what does that look like for us? Um, at this point, what I would like to see is a little bit more engagement on the business community to see what type of services the airport could benefit them. I've had conversations, um, about reaching out to the local, um, hospitals. Uh, obviously, we know the hospitals are a key component to, um, air traffic for obviously organ donation and some of the instruments and tools that they need to get to the local hospitals here. Um, and I think we could do a better service of that than what the Cedar Rapids one does. Uh, that's forward casting, though, so I think what we got to do is we got to reach out and start having those conversations to ask ourselves, what does that take a look like? We're always going to have hobbyist, um, plane, um, people that fly planes, they own planes, um, it's a great facility as it is, but we have to really take a look at it and say, what does it mean to our community and, and where does that fit in, you know, our economic plan and what the future looks like? and what the future looks like? So I think there's a lot of discussion to have, and again, too, I'd like to circle back around to the constituents about that and our business owners and, and reach out to our business community to see what that looks like.
Randy Sternad, the next question will begin with you. The last two years have brought about unprecedented issues to the United States, both nationally and locally. For example, defunding the police, immigration, unemployment, COVID, et cetera. What do you think the biggest issue facing Marion is, and how would you go about addressing it?
Those are great questions. I'm going to go, I'm going to kind of lean onto the point to say that I think we have a great community, we have great leaders in each one of our departments. These are topics where, there's a reason why Marion is as a safe community as it is. People are desiring to move to our local community here, and it's because of the services that we can provide. Defunding those things, you know, we're going into budgets here in the next couple of weeks and taking a look at what next year brings. Defunding a police department or defunding any particular department would just be catastrophic to any city. When we take a look at that, we, we need more police officers, we don't need less police officers. And it's only to, just to take care of the day-to-day necessity, things that we need. We can't control what the community's going to bring, all we can do is respond to it. I'm a very proactive individual. I hate to be reactive. When we have to be reactive, we're going to, our hands are tied and we're going to have a lot less limit, you know, a lot less opportunities than if we were to be proactive with it. But I think it comes back to what we were talking about. Again, it's communication, it's that collaboration of understanding, you know, what it is that we do, what we're doing and why we do it.
I'm definitely not in favor of defunding the police or the Fire Department. I think they're two critical issues that make our town the safe and the viable place that it is. If you think about expanding the size of our community, you can't live without either one of them. You got to have them both. The second thing is that if you think about the biggest disaster that we've had, yeah, COVID, it's affected the whole world, but deratio got us two years, 18 months ago. And people are still recovering from that. But in the end, what we found is that the people make the difference and the contractors rose to the occasion, and we collaborated with a lot of different groups. Trees Forever, we collaborated with the Community College to find more contractors if we could. We can't, we communicated with our neighboring states, neighboring cities, and people rose to the occasion. I think we need to keep that open door of communication. We've got to keep the open door of collaboration open, and we've got to look for people who have solutions that they've already tried so we can bring them in and use them in our community as well.
Dale Monroe, we begin with you with the next question. Given upcoming multifamily developments along Sixth Avenue as well as uptown, how do we ensure that adequate parks and amenities remain available?
It's a great question, and I can tell you that if you haven't seen the comprehensive plan, you need to look at it because it's built several really viable green spaces in every one of the developments that are to happen. And as people develop their current facilities, they're planting green spaces there as well. The, the specific facility you're talking about, I visited with several people in that location to find out how they enjoyed it and whether they found it as reasonable as they thought, and they were very happy with the location, very happy with the schools not far away, and very happy with the downtown area that's, as it's developing.
Randy Sternad?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback off of that one. Our comprehensive plan, if you haven't seen it, I would encourage you to go out on the website and take a look at it. It is, it's fantastic. As we're taking a look at this, again, being more proactive, as developers come in and say that they want to build a particular, in a particular division or an area, we've already put those line items in there that says that, you know, this is what we're going to need for water storage for runoff for the storm sewers. We're going to also have green space, we're going to have a walkability, we want paths within those areas, we want additionally, the additional width paths. I like the fact that we do have some low-lying areas in the community. So as we're continuing to build out, we want to take those water drainage areas that would be floodplank, floodplain zoned areas and turn those into shared spaces for parks. We got always a need for soccer fields, right, for the little kiddos to go out there and, and train and practice, and we're always looking for green space. So I think we're going to, you're going to start to see that really built out. I'm really proud of our Parks Department as well as all of our departments, but the days of people actually wanting to go back out to the park are going to be even more obvious as we're starting to see this. I go out to our parks and I drive by them and they're just packed, so very excited about them.
Thank you. You'll now have 30 seconds for a closing comment, and we'll begin with Dale Monroe.
As I mentioned, I've been a resident of the community for over 40 years. I've been passionate about serving and serving the various groups that we've served in those 40 years. My family grew up here. I'm extremely excited about the fact that as I walked around, I identified the specific projects that we talked about tonight, and I believe my background in administration as well as business will provide you with the opportunity to have great leadership in the city council if you elect me. Thank you.
On behalf of the Marion Economic Development Corporation and the Marion Chamber of Commerce, thank you for attending tonight's forum. Oh, and before we do that, Randy Sternad, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out as well, too. At this particular time, we're in a transition phase where onboarding our new city manager is going to be critical. I think having a solid council up there that has the, the past and the experience and the history is going to help with that onboarding process. I'm super excited to, to be looking forward to that as well, too. And that also kind of piggybacks on what I call continuity in governance. I know that's been used across the board, but we really need to have some stability up there and making some, be able to bring that past to the future. So I hope you'll find it to vote for, for me. I am super excited about seeking another four years and serving all of you. Thank you.
Randy, I apologize. Tonight's forum has been recorded and will be posted online tomorrow through the Marion Economic Development and Marion Chamber of Commerce's online platforms. Please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 2nd. Thank you to our candidates, and thanks to each of you for being here this evening. At this, at this time, I'd like to introduce Medco President Nick Glue. He has a few remarks to share.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you to each of you for taking precious time out of your schedules to be with us here this evening. We do just want to note that coming up on Election Day, Tuesday, November 2nd, Lynn County voters are going to be asked to approve a 10-year extension to our local option sales tax. We refer to that as LOST. While our organizations do not endorse candidates on the ballot, we do take positions on important ballot issues such as this one. So our organization and its Board of Directors believes a yes vote is a responsible way to invest in the future of our community. It's important to know that this is not a new tax. This is an extension of the 1% sales tax that has already been collected in Lynn County. So when you review your ballot, you're going to see that the City of Marion and our city council, they are proposing ballot language to spend 70% of the dollars collected on street and infrastructure improvements and the remaining 30% on other community assets. As you drive around the community today, you'll actually notice that our city, they, they have placed signs on many of the projects that have already been funded recently by local option sales tax, so pay attention to that. If you, I know we have crowds here that are people that do not necessarily live in Marion, especially if you're in the Lynn Mars School District, maybe you live in Robbins or Cedar Rapids or even the rural areas of our county. You might have different ways, different ballot language that your home community is proposing to spend those dollars. So do a little homework and understand how that money will be invested in your community. So we believe that extending LOST is a responsible way to cash flow projects versus paying for them using debt. This saves all of us as property taxpayers and business owners millions of dollars of interest over 10 years. Now, because of the way that revenues are collected and shared across the county, the good thing for the City of Marion is that our community actually receives about $1.36 in sales tax revenue for every $1 that is collected in our community. So this means that about 35% of the revenue that we receive in Marion actually comes from outside of our municipality. So all voters are encouraged to learn more about local option sales tax. You can visit votyesmarion.org, or you can also go to the City of Marion's website for information. That's cityofmarion.org/LOST. So being the best place in Iowa to raise a family and grow a business takes continued public investment in infrastructure and other community assets. So on November 2nd, on behalf of the Medco Board of Directors, we encourage you to vote yes. It's called Public Measure H. It might be on the back of your ballot, so make sure to flip that over if it is, and we hope you'll join us in extending the local option sales tax. So with that, we'll wrap up our forum tonight. We thank all of our candidates, even those that are running unopposed that joined us in the, in the beginning. We thank you for raising your hand and your willingness to be a leader in our community. And again, we encourage all of you to vote coming up on November 2nd. So thank you, everyone. We will take a brief break and be back with the final forum beginning at 7:30.